I'd like to open this Warrington Board of Aldermen meeting into session. Could we all stand for the pledge? Alderman, Holly, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to present Mayor Dyer with a plaque. Cheryl, could you come up?
Yes.
Steven? Mayor Dyer took office in April of 2012. He was re-elected in 2014. Before that, he served nine years on the P&amp;G Board and eight years on the Board of Justice. The plaque says, "The City of Warrington extends sincere appreciation to Jerry Dyer for serving as mayor from 2012 to 2014. Their genuine dedication and heartfelt service to the community have benefited the residents of our city." It's signed by the Board of Aldermen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just have a few brief words. Our son Steven and I are accepting this on behalf of Jerry this evening. He's sorry that he cannot be here to accept this for himself. I want you to know that he truly enjoyed being your mayor. I believe that he made a significant impact in the City of Warrington. He had a renewed sense of honesty, integrity, and calm that he brought to the city, and I believe many residents really appreciated that. On a personal note, our friends jokingly referred to me as Flo, the First Lady of I truly enjoyed that role, and it's because I was always Jerry's biggest fan and supporter. I always will be. And you should know that no two people were more proud to say we were from the City of Warrington. We want to once again thank the entire city staff for all you did, all your cooperation, and for all the love and support that we've received from the entire community. We are eternally grateful. Thank you all very, very much. Thank you.
Go on, two, three.
Cheryl, before you leave, I would like to make a motion to the Board that the city offices to be closed at noon on December the 24th in honor of Mayor Jerry Dyer.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We will appreciate that for the entire city staff that you guys get that day off. That was always very important to him, so thank you so much. Happy New Year.
Motion's been made by Alder Person Castorley, second by Alderman Sluther. I'll get it right when I need things. Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Alderman Sluter.
Yes.
Alderman Holly.
Yes.
Alder Person Castorley.
Yes.
Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Item number four, introduction of Travis Huddleston, Maintenance Labor and Street Department.
Forward, I'd like to introduce you Travis. He's Maintenance and Street Department.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys.
First weekend, you're still with us. One weekend, you're still with us.
Result of special meeting regarding replacement of mayor's position. It was, we met earlier this evening, and it was basically decided to not appoint anybody at this time to Alderman, that we would operate the city in our business as we are. As President of Board, I'll be conducting the meetings, and the Aldermen will be filling in and doing some of the duties of the mayor, help represent the city out in the city, in the public areas. We need a motion on that officially here, or just those results? Okay.
No action.
I'm happy to fill in for it, and I'll do my best. Item number six, approval of minutes. Regular Board meetings from October 21st.
Make a motion that we approve the regular Board meeting minutes from October 21st, 2014.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Person Castorley, second by Alderman Dyer, to approve the minutes from October 21st, 2014. Roll call vote?
Alderman Sluter.
Yes.
Alderman Holly.
Yes.
Alder Person Castorley.
Yes.
Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Next, we have executive session meetings from October 21st, 2014.
Make a motion to approve the executive session minutes from October 21st, 2014.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Sluter. Sluter, I'm gonna get that right yet. Second by Alderman Holly, to approve executive session meetings from October 21st. Roll call vote?
Alderman Holly.
Yes.
Alder Person Castorley.
Yes.
Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Alderman Sluter.
Yes.
I'll get that name yet. Item number seven, hearing from the public. At this time, we allow up to five minutes for anybody from the public who would like to speak. If so, please come up to the podium and state your name. Hearing none, the same opportunities given to the Board of Aldermen. Would you want to start, John?
Yeah, I don't have anything, John.
And I do not.
And I do not.
I do not.
I do not as well.
It's unanimous.
Wow, shocking.
Item number nine, refinancing the 2005 and 2009 certificates of participation. Joy Howard, would you like to?
I'm bad with mics, if you remember. Am I on?
Yes.
Oh, goodie. So, it's only been about two weeks since I was here, and I had presented to you the results of the lease refinancing, subject to all the documents being completed and approved by the purchaser, as well as the purchaser's counsel. And that whole process went very well and very smoothly, so the results that I had presented at the last meeting remain unchanged. And just to repeat those, because it's nice savings. The refinancing of the Series 2005 lease will result in savings over the life of the lease of about $43,000, I'm rounding. And for the refinancing of the Series 2009 lease, the savings is approximately $33,000. And you had received those schedules, so the schedules still are exactly the same. You will later this evening be adopting an ordinance that approves all of the lease documents. Bond Counsel Gilmore and Bill, there's two representatives here, Joe Palumbo and Sean Flynn, the nice young-looking men back there, are here to answer any questions you have regarding the financing, as far as legal aspects. You're also going to be later on, did you want me to go right into the next agenda item?
Unless they have questions on the 2005 and 2009.
Anybody have any questions?
So, later on this evening, you're also going to be taking some action on the revenue bond issue. And since I'm here at the podium, that was kind of the plan, would be I'll cover everything I'm going to cover at one time. So, again, if you don't have questions on lease, I'll just move on to the revenue bonds. The action that you're going to be taking is not final, it's kind of a preliminary action. And I don't believe that I gave you much of an update at all on the revenue bonds at the last meeting, but basically, I've been working with the city for some time, putting together financing for the first phase of the bond issue that the voters approved. We don't have an exact issue size yet, but it's going to be just under $10 million, more or less. After we got the overall sizing put together, the next step was to get you a rating, and the city has never had a rating before. This rating is not the city's rating. If you were to do a general obligation bond, or even get lease financing rated, this is not the rating that would apply. This rating is strictly enterprise utility rating. It's a rating on the water and sewer system. I believe that Terry put a copy of the rating report at each of your...
What agenda item is this? I remember seeing it early in the packet, but I can't find it now.
It's under the resolution 305 and 306.
So, it's okay.
And I haven't even explained that action yet. I'm just getting up to it. I'm just telling you the process we've taken to get to this point. Are you good? Should I keep going?
No, I got it.
Okay, so, drumroll. Don't interrupt me now, this is the big thing. The city got A-plus rating on its waterworks and sewage revenue bonds. Now, the ratings above you would go into a double A category, and the best rating being a triple A category. But A-plus rating within any rating category, A-plus is the highest within an A category. Then there's an A and an A-minus. So, within that A category, you have the highest rating, which for a city of your size, there's a big, oh, you know how the rating agencies work, you know, too big to fail. It's that kind of a concept. The bigger your community is, you start off with pluses just by size. So, given your size of your community, this is the best possible rating that you could have gotten. And beyond the size, it gets into credit and reserves, and how great of a job Terry is doing on managing your system. She did a great job. Also, Gabrielle worked with us on the rating call, did a great job getting you a fantastic rating. I think we were all fairly surprised. We felt pretty confident that you would get an A-category rating, but we were not expecting the A-plus, just the best you possibly could have gotten. That really helps your interest rates a lot, which...
What, can you quantify that? How many basis points would you give based on the rate?
Based on the rating, within any rating category, going from like an A to an A-plus, it's just a little tiny bit, maybe three basis points. But if you compare like an A-rating to a triple B-rating, the next rating down, it would be between a quarter to a half a percent difference. So, it really is a great thing.
I assume it also makes it easier to sell the bonds?
Yes, which takes us right to the next topic I wanted to talk about. As soon as we got the rating, we had the structure put together. We sent out a request for proposals for underwriters, and we received five proposals. And I believe that you have a copy of the spreadsheet that gives the results.
Yeah, that's item number nine. If you're trying to find it on your machine, a nine on your machine, on your IP.
Without getting into too much detail, on the left side is a real brief couple-of-words summary of the different things they were supposed to respond to in a request for proposal. But the main item in terms of selecting an underwriter is at the very bottom of the page, and it was highlighted. It says TIC, which means True Interest Cost. There's a footnote at the very bottom of the page. Is everyone with me?
Yeah.
Okay, shut me up or slow me down if I'm going too fast. But the True Interest Cost is a combined measure of interest rates and the underwriters' fees. And I like to compare it to if you were getting a home loan, and you go to the bank and they go X amount for your interest rate and X amount for points. It's kind of the same concept. It's like combining the interest rates and the points all at once. So, I have, without taking into account all of the different aspects of what they responded to, I simply ranked these according to the True Interest Cost, from the lowest to highest. Stiefel Nicholas's proposal was completely in conformance with our request for proposal. They offered us the lowest interest rate, but the best thing they did, I think I do want to point this out, is that if you look at item number five, some of the firms just gave us an indication of interest rates. We're not going to finally set the final rates on this until your December 2nd meeting. And so, the firms that said it's an indication of interest rates can come back on December 2nd and say, "Oh, the world's changed. We were wrong about the rates. The market really isn't what we thought it would be." And they can really move off of what was ever in their proposal. In contrast, the proposal from Stiefel Nicholas and Commerce Bank were based on an index, a nationally published index of what rates do. And when we get to December 2nd, they won't be giving you the rate that's in their proposal. They're going to adjust it according to this index. So, if rates go up, their rates will go up. If rates go down, their rates will go down, but no more than what the index did, basically. So, given that their proposal was indexed and that they offered the lowest True Interest Cost, I'm recommending Stiefel Nicholas, and that's what's reflected in the resolution that you're going to be adopting. It selects Stiefel Nicholas as the underwriter, and then it also approves a letter that's attached, that we refer to as the G17 letter. The Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board that governs the activities of underwriters and financial advisors requires underwriters to give you a letter before they enter into the purchase contract on December 2nd. They're required to give you disclosures saying that they're not your financial advisor, that they act in the interest of both you and the investors. They have to disclose any risks that they see, that they've recommended, and some other things that basically may or may not be applicable to your transaction because you do have a financial advisor. So, we're not trying to say whether or not they did everything in their letter that they're supposed to do. We're really just acknowledging that they gave you the letter they're required to give to you. And that's what the resolution says. You're accepting it because you're doing it as accommodation so that they can comply with the rule.
Question, couple of... Would there be a scenario ever where you wouldn't take the one that had the lowest TIC total?
Yes, if Stiefel had not indexed the rates and somebody else had, I would tend to go with the higher interest rate, just because I don't like firms that give us proposals that...
And flip-flop.
Yeah, they're not saying they're going to, you know, put the money where their mouth is, so to speak.
I noticed they're the only ones that had a call date that was farther out than the rest.
Actually, the Raymond James, the 10 years was out further, that would have been 2024.
Right, but everybody else was 2022.
That's just, it's just their preferences for the buyers, and I didn't think one-year difference should be the governing factor. But you are noticing some of the subtleties, which is, you know, a good thing. And I put a lot of things in a request for proposal, just in case we had like two tight proposals. If it was a tie, then I would go with the shorter call date. And that's not a mandatory call. That's means, starting in 2023, if the city's accumulated extra funds or interest rates go down and you want a refund, or whatever the reason might be, it's a call at the city's option, a redemption at the city's option, not mandatory.
So, then we're locked into this until the call date, so we could not refinance?
You could do a kind of a refinancing called an advance refunding, which is fairly complicated, but there's always ways to get out from under if you wanted to. But obviously, the shorter the redemption, the better it is for the city.
Any other questions?
I guess then the only other thing I just want to reiterate is that the resolution that you're passing for this transaction is just to select the underwriter, and then on December 2nd, I will be back again with their final interest rates and all of the final documentation that you would approve.
So, I need a motion?
Nothing.
Not yet.
It's nothing.
We're good. It's just if you have any other questions with me or Bond Counsel. Otherwise, I think we're all leaving. Is that correct?
So, well, let me ask the question. On Resolution 305, does that relate to this at all?
Yeah, and I thought Sean was going to talk about that at this point.
Yeah, because there is a resolution for approval later on.
The policy for tax exempt compliance.
Oh, you're right. I totally forgot about that. I am so sorry.
We wouldn't want him to get all dressed up and not have a chance to sit.
Well, he had to come anyway and make sure that everything was in order before he started your meeting, so I wouldn't have felt bad at all.
Oh, okay.
Resolution 305, approving a tax exempt financing compliance policy procedure. In 2011, the IRS came out with an announcement and had said they want all issuers of tax exempt debt to adopt written procedures relating to their tax exempt bond releases. And there's certain things they want to see in a policy, such as, they want every organization to designate a bond compliance officer who is responsible for maintaining records relating to the bonds. The records would include investments in the bond proceeds, how the bond proceeds were spent, and then, and as well as monitoring the use of the bond finance asset. There's no requirement that this policy be adopted, but there's a tax form that has to be filed for every tax exempt obligation, and it's just information, it's for informational purposes, and they amended the form, and there's actually a question on there. Has the issuer adopted written procedures? And it's yes or no. And we strongly advise our clients to mark that box yes, because if not, you're essentially being put on a list on the IRS. And, you know, we think that definitely increases your chances of having an audit in the future. So, you know, we strongly recommend that this policy be adopted, but that's why you're being asked to adopt this policy. It's one you adopt one time, and it governs all your outstanding tax exempt obligations.
Is this pretty much a boilerplate policy?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no modification specific to the city?
No.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I guess let's go on to item 10, partnership with Scenic Regional Library for a story walk in the park.
My name is Christy Schink, and I am the Youth Services Librarian for Scenic Regional Library. I have written a grant through the Missouri State Library. It is through the Racing to Read Initiative, which is the State of Missouri's Early Literacy Initiative that they just adopted this year, last year. So, through this grant, one of the things I would like to do is put story walks in the parks in our seven communities, and Warrington is one of our Scenic Regional Library communities. What a story walk is, it's a series of signs that would go along a trail in a park, and as families walked down the trail, they would be able to read a picture book. So, each of the signs, a series of 15 to 20 signs, depending on the length of the book, each of the signs would be a page spread from a picture book, and as you walk along, you would have read the entire book. And then on the backs of the signs, there will be early literacy activities, suggestions for that families can do at home, or outside, or anywhere, to help their children get ready to read by kindergarten, simple activities that you can do without cost in anywhere you are. So, they could read as they walk in one direction, read a book together, and as they walk back, get ideas to help their children get ready to read. So, all that we need from City of Warrington is, you know, do you want a story walk in one of your parks? And we would be covering all the costs associated with the story walk through the grant, and...
Did you give us an idea what kind of materials the signs would be? Are they pretty substantial, or...
Yes, the signs with the informational part on the backside are made of that plastic corrugated stuff printed on there. The books, the other side of it, are actual pages from large books. I'm buying big books, and so we will take those books apart and actually laminate those and affix them to the backside of that sign. And then, they're 18 by 24 inches. Then that goes into an iron frame, black iron frames, that then push into the ground.
I mean, you're going to be responsible for maintaining them, or is the city, you're asking the city?
Well, the city will choose where you want it to go.
Right.
You have more than one park, I'm assuming, so you would choose what park, what trail, what area, where you want the signs placed. So, I would need assistance from someone from your Parks Department, or wherever, you know, because, to decide where you want them. What we do plan to do, since we have seven communities, we're going to be creating seven story walks, is to put them up, if we get the grant. I will have them printed up in February. We will put them up in March, April, June, July, August. Yes, so, get them up sometime in March, leave a story up for two months, and then rotate the stories around through the parks. So, through the spring, summer, and fall, you'll have alternating, you know, a different story every couple of months.
Does somebody come out from the library once a week just to make sure the signs are not county wampus or destroyed, or how does that work?
I could see if I could get a staff member. You know, that's not something I could do from union. Our headquarters is in union, so we wouldn't be driving up here that often, but I could have a staff member check on it, or if you got reports of anything being vandalized or anything wrong, let us know. I am writing in funds in the grant to do replacement in case of vandalism or theft, to a point. Of course, if it becomes extreme, we would have to give up on that set of signs, but, you know, unless it's extreme vandalism, you know, we would replace.
I think that's my largest concern. I think it's a great idea, but is the maintenance of it, and, you know, because we're a little thin already on our staff when it comes to the amount of jobs that department has to do. So, if the vandalism occurs on you and you replace them, just, I mean, these are not concreted in, right?
No, no. They are iron frames with, you know, posts.
So, worst-case scenario, if it doesn't work out, they can be easily dispossessed.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions?
I thought you were going to ask if we did a dog park, if there would be story walks that you could read to your dogs.
Well, I would read these to my dog. He's human.
And if you do want to have a story walk, what I would need is a letter of support, just very short letter. I can write it and send it, email it to Melody tomorrow, just stating that you are willing to partner with us in this, and that your contribution to the partnership is permission to put it in the park and deciding on the location.
Can I make a motion to approve the signature of the partnership letter? I do so.
I second. Motion by Alder Person Castorley, second by Alderman Ock, to go into a partnership with Scenic Regional Library for a story walk in the park, science program. Any other questions, discussion? Roll call vote?
Alder Person Castorley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion passed 6-0.
Thank you.
Item 11, elderly housing apartments. Michael Marty?
Well, we're not Michael Marty. So, we'll fill in today for Michael Marty, even though we're not him.
Go ahead, state your name.
I will. I'm Carla Potts, and I'm the Deputy Director for Housing Development for Northeast Community Action Corporation, NICAC. And with me is Kate Ramsell. And Pete and I are partners with Michael on this proposed 42-unit elderly project. And we just wanted to come tonight, we're going to be very brief, we just wanted to come tonight and kind of tell you what we're looking at. We brought some preliminary site plans, what the buildings would look like, what the layout of each unit would look like. We know that we'll be back many times to talk with you through this process, but... but we wanted to give you an idea of what we were looking at. And this is out on Fairgrounds Village, Fairgrounds Villa Road, right across from the Fairgrounds. So we think it's a great location. We're excited about elderly housing and think there's a need. So we just kind of wanted to update you on where we're at and what we're trying to do. And I'm gonna let Pete Ramsell kind of talk to you about a little bit of how we'll finance this. We're not coming asking for any money from the city, but to tell you a little bit about the financing of this. Pete?
Before we jump into that, I'm trying to figure out where this is laying out exactly. There was an old ball field where you first turned in.
There's a water tank.
So it's where the old ball field used to be?
Yes. Yes.
And so it has, it would have one road access out?
Yes. Yes. Yes, it would.
Okay, I got you.
My name is Pete Ramsell. I'm the former Executive Director of the Missouri Housing Development Commission. The significance of that is Missouri Housing Development Commission is the agency that issues these tax credits. These apartments will be financed basically through the equity raised from the sale of the tax credits. And it's a very, very competitive process. MHDC typically gets 130 applications, maybe 30, 35, 40 of them get funded. So it is a very competitive process. We wanted to introduce the concept to you early on. We will come back several times, as Carla indicated. Applications are actually due in September, the first week in September. Decisions are typically made in December, and believe it or not, the process starts right now. So we wanted to come tonight, bring the concept to you, tell you what we're thinking about. If you're interested, we'd like to pursue this, 42 units elderly. It's a, if you'll turn to that elevation, I think that kind of helps me tell the story. It's a, it's a project. It's a building that we've built all over the state. We know that the elderly love it. It's a single-story, has a little patio in front, typically has flowers. It's an area where they sit on their front porch. There's typically a back porch, but that front porch just seems to be a deep place where they like to sit and watch the neighbors walk the sidewalk.
Isn't this identical almost to the development that's by the pool complex? I think that was a senior development very similar to this.
May have been.
Cause it almost looks like the exact type building.
Yeah.
I'm trying to lose it. Where the street is, though.
It's actually, I find it a story to say.
Right, right. There's a senior housing. I think we did the same thing a few years ago, when they came to us and asked us if we wanted to participate in putting those senior units in.
Great.
So we've already been through this a little bit.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I mean, I think that this is a great idea, you know, it's just, you know, it's a great idea. I'd love to see it. Obviously, it has to go through all the channels, so there's not much we can do as a board, other than to say, yeah, it's a great idea.
What is very significant, and I'll be brief with this, I know you've got a lot to do tonight. What is very significant is actually getting the city support for this project, because it is so competitive. So letters of support, resolution of support, not tonight. We're here just to introduce the concept. We'll come back as we develop this, tell you more about it, talk about development costs, talk about construction costs, talk about rents, why they're affordable, how we make them affordable, who will manage it, who will take care of this property, we'll answer all those questions. But in the long term, what we're looking for is letters of support from the city, from state reps, state senator. That helps us tremendously get this funded.
Yeah, I'm not really sure how we would proceed with something like that without.
Well, I think when we've had projects like this in the past, and you guys have been made aware that you have to go through planning and zoning. This is not a presentation of the site plan or anything like that in our process for planning zoning. We have a pretty expedited procedure. Do you know when you plan on filing with our planning zoning director for approval of the project?
Based on, we have to submit this by September. We would file probably January, February.
When are you guys requesting a letter of support? Would that be after your project goes through the planning and zoning and to the Board of Aldermen?
Absolutely.
Okay, so after that's completed?
Yes.
Because in the past, you guys, the board has written letters saying, or offered to write letters saying, we support senior housing in our community, you know, when there's been a direction prior to the issuance of that type of approval, because I know planning, you guys are gonna want planning zoning to look at this and also look at, you know, the planning and zoning officer, Jack, to look at it as well. So I just wanted to clarify timeline, because I get really nervous when you haven't been through planing, zoning, and the board, and you present pretty significantly drawn-out documents, pretty detailed, without having to go through the process yet, but you're really just saying, this is what we want to do, we're bringing this to the community. And then you're gonna go through planing, zoning, and the board, and then you're gonna ask for approval, and then you're gonna ask for a letter of support saying, not only did we approve it, we support this, right?
Absolutely.
But that won't be till that's gone through the process?
Absolutely. Yes.
We just wanna take you step by step, take you all the way through it, give you all the facts, so when it comes time for a letter of support, you're comfortable.
Yeah, perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much.
It looks really nice. I mean, I think it's needed in here.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 12, approval of hiring Kenneth Hoffman, Building Inspector, with start date of November 10. Same by.
Make a motion for the approval of hiring of Kenneth Hoffman at $35,000 a year as a Building Inspector, starting November 10.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman.
Holly.
Holly. Thank you. To hire Kenneth Hoffman at $35,000 a year as Building Inspector, starting date of November 10. Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castorly?
Yes.
Motion passed 6-0. Item 13, Terry Thorn, Finance Officer.
My first item for you this evening is the recommendations from the Tourism Commission that met on October 28. There were two items for their consideration. Both were for interstate attraction signs. One for Warrington Oil's Holiday Inn Express in the amount of $600, and the other for Warrington Oil Fast Lane in the amount of $600. Total of $1,200, which is a budgeted line item for the Tourism Commission.
Make a motion that we approve the recommendations of the Tourism Department, a Tourism Committee, for a total of $1,200 to pay for interstate attraction signs.
Second.
Motion by Alder Person Castorly, second by Alderman Holly to approve the recommendation of tourism of $1,200. Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes. Motion passed 6-0.
My next item for you is a request to schedule a work session with the representative from Bario, who we have selected to produce our master plan. We met with that representative, we being the department head's staff, last week to start determining what documents we have available so that they can start to get some idea of what they're gonna have to produce from scratch and what we already have. It was a very productive meeting. Did ask about her coming back and meeting with all of you. You had expressed a desire to meet with them, to kind of identify what the scope is that you want for this project. She can be here at 5:30 prior to our November 18 board meeting, if that's what you all would like to do.
Works for me.
Got this in?
Did you say 5:30?
5:30.
Agretable, just in? Looks like a good date.
Okay, I will let her know that that works, and she will be here to get your recommendations and suggestions and input on what you want the scope of that project to be, so that they can get started. The only other items I have for you is just informational. There have been 131 people sign up for recycling, 132 after tonight, when Alder Person Castorly signed up for recycling, since we have put out the forms and offered the free recycling. So we'll see how that continues to grow.
Can you tell me if that's an increase of what was done before?
There's 132 new ones. That's not counting anyone who is already on the recycling program.
How many do we have before the ballpark? Who are on the four?
At one point, we were up to about 50% participation, so somewhere north of 1,200-ish doing it.
At least 10% more.
I mean, we'll hope that it continues to grow to where it used to be, but 131. And I'm sure what will happen is it will continue, you know, not everybody gets their forms back right away. So I think the number will continue to grow. The other thing is, we will have the pool report next meeting. There's been so much work involved with three refinances and bonds over the last couple of weeks. We simply didn't have time to complete it, but we will have that prepared for next meeting and bring the seasoned pool report to you for your review. Other than that, that's all I have.
Terry, I'd like to thank you guys and give you credit for that call. I don't think, I don't think the general public knows the amount of work and effort you and Gab did to get that credit rating of an A+, so I'd like to thank you.
Well, I will say this. For a long time, I've wondered why the city never had rated bonds.
Now you know.
And about halfway into the process, if I had known at the beginning what I knew halfway through, I understood why the city had never had rated bonds.
Right.
It was worthwhile now that we have it. I think it's a huge benefit, but it absolutely was unbelievable to me that it could be so much information. But worthwhile.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Can you, usually when we get down to the resolution stage and the bill stage, we fly through this?
Sure.
On Resolution 307, on the annexation I sent you an email about, could you kind of give the board kind of an update on what we're talking about and where and the history? As I know, last time I was on the board, we were trying to march east, trying to march west. I don't even know how far west we are now.
Actually, Melody is gonna talk about this under item 17.
Great, okay.
She knew you were gonna have questions.
All right.
Any other questions? Any, none? Item 14, Finance Manager Gabriel.
Good afternoon, evening. First item that I have for you is the accounts payable for the month. I am asking for approval to pay that amount, which is $440,097.73.
I was gonna say, that's probably one of the biggest approvals we've done in a long time, but I see in here, you know, there's engineering costs that account for about a fourth of that.
Yes.
So that explains it. I make a motion that we approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $440,097.73.
Motion by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Holly to pay the bills Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes. Motion passed 6-0.
The next item I have is the monthly report for the month of September.
Any questions?
Well, I see that our sales tax did dip. Having had two great months, and now we gotta drop, so.
Yep.
But it's still ahead.
It is, and in October, it takes a little bit of a dip also, but it's still, it's still higher budget.
We're still trending the right direction.
I don't know if there are any other questions. No other questions? Should we move on?
Okay, the next item I have is the utility billing bad debt write-offs. These are the accounts that have, went to the collection agency, except for the ones that say too small to collect, where they, they don't attempt to collect those. But the other ones have went, and then they have sent us notice that they are removing them from the list for the reasons that are listed in the comments column. So I am requesting approval to write these accounts off. The amount is $4,814.90.
Terry, why is your name on this list?
Cause I was incarcerated. So just to a perspective, this is the first time in the last two years we've written a lot off? And do we write off?
We should be doing it probably every year.
Every year?
So it has been, yes, you're correct. It's been a couple of years.
Is this a typical amount?
It is probably a little higher, because it has been a couple of years, right.
So is it, I guess the other question is, are there changes in policy or operation that would reduce these, or that's just, that's just the way it is?
I mean, if you look at them, how many of them are bankruptcy-type situations? You can't collect those.
Yeah, you can't do, that's not a policy issue.
I think our collections policy, if you will, is fairly tight, because you could get out 60 days, but that's the maximum you're gonna get out and continue to have service. At that point, you're gonna be disconnected. In order to get your service back on, you have to pay your entire bill. So anything shorter than that, to try to make these numbers smaller, just, I don't know how it would be workable.
Were we holding deposits on any of these, or?
Any of the ones that would have had deposits would have been applied to the final bill before it would have been sent to collections.
So this is a natural deposit, then?
Right.
Make a motion to approve the write-off of the amount of $4,814.90.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Schluter. Right, I'm getting closer all the time. To approve the recommendation of writing off the water bill of $4,814.90. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote?
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion passed 6-0.
The last item I have is the utility billing payment arrangements policy. We've had a procedure in place for quite some time. There was a customer that put a note in our comment box that has kind of prompted this, which will be a change to the date the payment arrangements are due. Normally, they were due by the last day of the month, and this is extending that to 5:00 PM on the first business day of the following month.
I think the key that public should get from this is somebody from the public made a comment, city saw it, said it made sense, and responding to that.
Correct. That is absolutely correct.
And the comment really was, we don't, many of us don't receive our check until the first day of the month, as opposed to the last day of the month, which just had never been brought to us and had never occurred, so it absolutely made sense.
So do we need to approve this, make a motion? I make a motion that we amend the utility billing payment arrangements.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alder Person Castorly, second by Alderman Schluter.
I think Joe, he should second all of them the rest of the night, or by the end of the year, you'll have it perfect.
It's terrible. To, I don't even know what the motion is anymore. Would you read back the motion?
To approve the utility billing payment arrangement policy.
Any other discussion? Roll call, vote?
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes. Motion passed 6-0. I just can't believe it. Okay, where are we at? I'm so flustered now. Item number 15, Economic Development Director, Michelle.
Good evening. First thing I have for you is my economic development report.
So there was some rumbling around town. There was something going on at the old KFC. Is that something you know about, you could disclose?
I know about it, but unfortunately, at this time, I cannot. I know about it, but unfortunately, at this time, I cannot disclose anything on that.
Well, then we'll start spreading different rumors.
It's, it's interesting how people from outside the community view things. I had a meeting the other day with somebody from St. Louis who lives in St. Louis, has a lake home, and he's told me he, he always stopped at the Warranton Kentucky Fried Chicken place, and he wanted to know when it was going to reopen. And I said, "Why did you stop there?" He says their serving portions were larger than any other Kentucky Fried Chicken. So, he asked the owner about that, and the owner said, "Yeah, we buy bigger portions." You would think. Would people notice that? But that's why he came to Warranton all the time, because he likes the bigger portions. So, I, I thought it was kind of strange.
He couldn't afford just to buy two portions of the dog.
He probably could have afforded to buy the whole restaurant, actually. Is there any other questions?
The next item I have for you is approval to pay Boonslick Regional Planning Commission membership dues. I make a motion that we approve the membership dues for Boonslick Regional Planning in the amount of $3,152.
I'll second that. I wish you wouldn't have done that. I'm gonna cry all night. You guys are killing the challenge. Motion by Alderman Holly to, I don't even know where I'm at.
Give it bye.
I don't even know where I'm at anymore. I just give up. To approve the paying the dues, membership dues for the Boonslick Regional Planning Commission. Second by Alderman Schluter. It doesn't count if you say it ahead of him. Just tell him.
It's like looter with an S.
Okay. Rule call vote?
Alderperson Castily? Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion passed 6-0. Item number 16, Public Works Director Guy.
Good evening. I have a few projects I'd like to have approved. First project would be approval of remove and replace some roadway on Wolf Road by Bristol Manor. The asphalt's tore up there. Get that in.
It was a budgeted item.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and it looks like we budgeted 18.5 and it's coming in at 18.415. So, on the motion that we approve, the project total of $18,415.
Second.
I would ask one question. What's your timeline on this project?
At this point with the weather, we're gonna try to pick and choose. If the weather stays clear and nice, we're gonna jump on it right away.
Okay, great.
If the weather turns bad, I just, I need them approved so I can move forward with them. None of these that I have coming up, I have a timeline because I might be able to jump from one to the other. We can make it, we can nice weather and go off of there.
I was just asking for the public's.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't remember who made the motions anymore.
I did. Jamie seconded.
Alderperson Castily made a motion to approve the Wolf Road and Bristol Manor project. Second by Alderman Dreyer. The project is going to cost $18,415. Any other discussion? Rule call vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Motion passed 6-0.
Next item I have is the downtown stormwater inlet. This is project is a carryover. We replaced some storm drains coming down Main Street, and we've, I believe, solved the problem while the water rushing down this way. So, what we want to do is fix the storm base catchings that we have that are already in place and dress them up. Ones are just a metal grate, so we need to dig that out and put a natural catch base in it and clean that up.
And where are these at? I mean, I know it's down.
Southwest, on the corner southwest, and then there's two on South Market. It's just the older grates that are deteriorated, and we just want to replace them and move on.
Did the scope of the project change significantly because of the big budget difference?
I'm sorry.
Did the scope of the project change? Because originally, you had $10,000 the budget.
Well, originally, we were, we were thinking that we were going to need storm water all the way down Main Street and then run it off the side, but after we went up to Hudson and that and took it from there and ran it to Walton Street, not as much water runs down Main Street. We haven't had no issues since that project's been done. So, we just want to replace the outlets so they look nice and not trip hazard. And that was, it was budgeted at $10,000, but we didn't need to do all the extra storm water. So, repairs came in at $3,000.
You're gonna get us later.
I'm sorry.
You're gonna get us somewhere later.
I wouldn't. I'm just happy you didn't get us now.
Well, I saved it for later.
I'm gonna, then I'm confused. What's the difference between the projected total of one for 843 and then for all three for 3,000? So, there, it's 843 each?
Each, that's correct. And it's, and it's, it's something we, we're gonna have to make. I mean, it needs something we can just buy and set in place and.
So, it's not to exceed them, I guess. She actually has to fabricate this. We have to fabricate.
That's correct. We can buy the lid and, but we're gonna have to build, dig the pit and get some piping in there and make it work with what we have.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve the downtown stormwater area inlet project, not to exceed $3,000.
I'll second that.
Perfect.
Yes. Motion by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Schluter. I say it wrong yet again? Slutter?
Schluter.
Schluter. I don't know why I can't get that right.
Just put an S in front of looter.
Yeah. To approve the downtown stormwater area inlet for $3,000. Any other discussion? Other than me not being able to pronounce names? Rule call vote?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion passed 6-0.
You could say Alderman Eric.
That would be my next.
Go for it.
Go for that, Tom.
Next item I have is the stormwater project on Steinhagen Road next to Pizza Hut. I don't know if you've drawn, went by there, but that needed to be repaired. And that came in at $4,191. Budgeted amount was $4,200.
Make a motion that we approve the stormwater Steinhagen slash Pizza Hut project for $4,191. Second.
Motion by Alderperson Castily, second by Alderman Holly to approve the stormwater project on Steinhagen and Pizza Hut for $4,191. Any other discussion? Rule call vote?
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion passed 6-0.
Next item I have is the stormwater on Sundance Drive and Tomahawk, and that came in project at $2,030. That budget, budgeted amount is $2,100.
Make a motion to approve the stormwater Sundance Drive to Tomahawk project in the dollar amount of $2,030.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Dreyer to approve the stormwater Sundance Drive and Tomahawk project for $2,030. Any other discussion? Rule call vote?
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion passed 6-0.
And then the next item I have is approval for the chlorine gas leak policy.
So, what's, what's the change in the policy of the recent coverage?
There was not a policy.
There was no policy. So, this is a new policy?
Yes, sir.
So, have we started that, that infiltration work yet? Or is that just different?
No, this is, this is for chlorine at the wells.
Oh, okay, for chlorine.
So, there's the emergency response plan.
There's the emergency response that we have, and we have all the information of contact. What it, what it sums up is well four, six, seven, and eight all have chlorine in the chlorine bottles. We have three 150-pound cylinders in each outside unit. If we pull up on site and we have a chlorine leak, we have a procedure on what to do. The first procedure is 911. Warranton Fire Department handles all chlorine leaks. They're equipped with the emergency response kit and all that.
So, we've always had the procedures in place, but this policy that we want approval on tonight is stating that the employees will comply.
That's correct.
Or they'll be subject to.
All, all information packets will be in the trucks, and we'll go through the training with that.
And also identifying that the primary objective is public health.
I make a motion that we approve the chlorine gas leak policy as presented.
You guys are just playing me. Motion by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Dreyer to approve the chlorine gas leak emergency policy. Any other discussion? Rule call vote?
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion passed 6-0.
Can I, one more question? So, have we started the process where we've gone through and checking for people?
It was, they were gonna, the newspaper was gonna run it, and Tim emailed me and they couldn't run it prior to the newspaper running up. It is, it has been in the paper now, and it is, we are starting it. I have one key player that's gonna be on vacation in this process, but yeah, we're ready to start rolling with it.
So, if we get a phone call from a constituent who has an issue because it got into their premises, because they did have a leak or a problem, how do we want to do it? Should we just ask them to call the city and contact you, or just the switchboard?
Contact Public Works.
Public Works, okay.
That's all I have.
All you have, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Guy.
Item number 17, City Clerk Melody.
On the agenda tonight, Resolution 307 is a resolution calling for a public hearing to annex an unincorporated area into the city of Warranton, Missouri. What this is, is the right-of-way of Interstate 70 going to the west. It's approximately 600 feet.
How far are we down the road?
If you look at the drawing, you see how it kind of starts to like go to the north just a little bit? It kind of like bumps out. That's where the outer road kind of goes to the north, because it used to be parallel with the road. Now, it's kind of starting to make that big loop that goes around to get to the overpass.
So, we're at the overpass?
No, not yet.
How, how close?
We've probably got two more annexations to go, maybe.
The wider it gets, the longer.
The more you can go.
Piece of road we can annex. So, we've been dealing with these very short and narrow sections. We got a big jump because we were actually able to work with MoDOT in Warren County where they consented. When we did the big one.
Pendleton cut off.
Pendleton cut off. We were, we were able to get them to agree there. And we worked out the east one with Truesdale and Wright City to, where did we go on the east side?
We're at the bottom of the hill.
Franklin Road. Franklin Road. So, the west one, they're making us do it incrementally. But as it widens up, then we'll be able to do the calculations to take not just 600 feet at a time.
So, how many, how long between jumps? Does that have to be a year?
No, we do it, we, we basically have been doing it on our municipal election cycle, so we don't have to pay for ballots. So, we've just been doing it, you know, on our April ballot and putting it on, and it's always had a favorable majority enough to approve it, so we're getting there. We're already complete on the east side. That's all settled. It's just this. So, as we get to the next, the next three, we should have the greatest jump because as we get to the overpass, then the width of it will be, yeah, and it'll, then that subsequent one will probably get us close to the county limits or maybe not close to county limits.
But you can only exit, that can only go down to the end of the county line, or can you go beyond?
We could go beyond if we wanted to. I don't, I think Jonesburg has taken a little bit. Yeah, Jonesburg has taken some, but I don't know that they've done anything since then.
Are they close to the, close to the overpass on the other side?
No, no, I think it's pretty wide open.
Kind of where the certainty building, where the certainty building is.
Pretty much right where it's at.
That's the dividing line.
Okay, because you really like to get to the overpass, obviously.
Yeah.
That's the goal, okay. So, I got, what do you have? You have anything else, Melody?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, item 18, Bills to Ordinants. Bill number 63-14.
These are simply to deal with the refinancing of some of the debt the city had. So, I'll do this bill number 63-14 for the first reading.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Dreyer to, for the first reading of bill number 63-14.
In ordinance authorizing city of Warranton, Missouri to enter into a base lease and a lease purchase agreement with Branch Banking and Trust Company as LSC and federal tax certificate related thereto in order to refund the lease obligation entered into in 2005 and to approve the execution of certain documents in connection therewith.
Call for the second and final reading of bill number 63-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, second by Alderperson Castily for the second and final reading and passage of bill number 63-14. Rule call vote?
In ordinance authorizing city of Warranton, Missouri to enter into a base lease and a lease purchase agreement with Branch Banking and Trust Company as LSC and a federal tax certificate related thereto in order to refund the lease obligation entered into in 2005 and to approve the execution of certain documents in connection therewith.
Rule call vote?
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Bill number 63, 64-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 64-14.
Second. Bill, bill, let's see, motion made by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Ock. I can't even talk anymore. For the first reading of bill number 64-14.
In ordinance authorizing city of Warranton, Missouri to enter into a base lease and a lease purchase agreement with Branch Banking and Trust Company as LSC and a federal tax certificate related thereto in order to refund the lease obligation entered into in 2009 and to approve the execution of certain documents in connection therewith.
Call for second and final reading and passage of bill number 64-14.
Second.
Okay, here we go. Motion made by Alderman Schluter, second by Alderman Dreyer for the second and final reading and passage of bill number 64-14.
In ordinance authorizing city of Warranton, Missouri to enter into a base lease and a lease purchase agreement with Branch Banking and Trust Company as LSC and a federal tax certificate related thereto in order to refund the lease obligation entered into in 2009 and to approve the execution of certain documents in connection therewith.
Rule call vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Motion passed 6-0. Resolution number 305.
Make a motion to approve Resolution number 305 for the tax exempt financing policy.
Second.
Motion made to approve, or motion by Alderman Ock and second by Alderperson Castily to approve Resolution 305, a taxpaying finance compliance policy and procedure. That's me, too. Bad deal. Rule call vote?
I'll read it first.
You read it first, okay.
Resolution 305 approving a tax exempt financing compliance policy and procedure for the city of Warranton, Missouri.
Rule call vote?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?